Is this working? Yeah, okay. All right, welcome to the zoning board of appeals for the town of Webster. Today, July 9th, 2024. We have a total of three items on the agenda for tonight. We, when we have public, open public session, we will leave the time for the public to speak to five minutes for their, for speaker. I have the proof of legal application for all items here with me, so everybody's been notified, size has gone up. Call for attendance.
Mrs. Volan here, Mr. Hausler.
Here.
Mr. Short.
Here.
Mr. Leiden.
Here.
Mr. Fentonada.
Here.
Mr. Otisso.
Here. Stand for the pleasure of the delegates.
United States of America, to the remote, who understand one location, or you may be this, whatever being justice or.
All right, first item on our agenda tonight is 528 Lake Road, Decedition and Shed.
528 Lake Road, Decedition and Shed, located at 528 Lake Road, Anthony Frank and Rebecca Tiberio are requesting area variances to allow deck extension with a part of the rear setback, less than what is required in the utility shed and front setback, which is not permitted, an eight point five acre parcel for the SPL number 048.19-1-80, located in an R1 simulating residential district, under sections 350-10 and 350-47 of the code of the town of Webster.
Hi, my name is Anne Hansen, I'm the architect working with Rebecca and Frank on their addition and shed to their new property on 528 Lake Road. So you probably can see from the plans, the house is currently within the front setback entirely, it's very close to the road. So any modifications we do, we actually require variance. So here we are, looking for a variance for the deck, which is to the rear and a shed, none of them are any closer than the houses now to the road, but they will definitely be in the front setback. We are maintaining the side and the rear setbacks. You can see on my site plan, I did kind of show as a dotted line where the setbacks are, and it's really just the front setback that we are infringing upon. So I know we had sent you some, like we had done add the shed, maybe working with Josh to get that into works here, so we're actually gonna be seven foot four with the shed, if that is allowed from the front setback, from the front property line, I'm sorry. You can see now the house is actually in front of the property line, the way that it sits now, and obviously his grandfather did it for all these years, but I have the client too, if you have any other questions for them or for us.
Regardless of the approachment on the right away, is there a agreement with the county to have their house there?
What do you mean by agreement with the county?
Is there a legal agreement with the county to have their portion of the house located in the right way?
I don't know, the county's still making work. There were the changes that happened on Lake Road, I would imagine that some of those lines were changed over the years. I know that it was originally Lake Road and the road, and then when it was changed to a highway by the Department of Transportation, some of the setbacks were changed due to the fact that it's a highway.
Well, I'm not speaking of setbacks, the house is physically located in the right way.
That is.
Anyway, I should put your attorney on that, but I know it's something, something that's cumbersome, but you really, legally should take care of as soon as you can.
It's not so much something that affects our decision tonight, but it's something that you may wanna have, you know, in your possession to make sure you've got that. Because, again, looking at the plan, if you have a line that goes through the front of your house, it's not be this front setback, or the, you know, so having that in hand will help you in all areas.
It may affect value and your ability to transfer the property, it's a major issue.
We just bought the house a year ago, and it's changed and.
Your attorney didn't question that? Well, no, the attorney may have addressed that in his file, you may not be aware, but I would check if they're.
So the application that I originally received, the proposed deck is a different orientation, which Josh shared with me that we changed the orientation, the orientation has been since changed because of the setback.
Yes, that's right, yes.
Yeah, if you can talk to that a little bit, and then my other question is, the application I, the documentation that I have, the drawings that I have, don't show any shed, so that's also something else I'd like to understand a little bit more as well.
Just go through one of the things that the center had to check.
For, I'm sorry, for the shed?
Yeah.
I actually did make some fresh copies till we could do some kind of line down, should have been on there, which I'll need now. The septic, we did determine what the location is of the cap, and so we kind of cut that corner out, and then I moved the shed that far into the north so that they could still have kind of enough depth to put a table or something there, so.
Do you think it might, because would you, is that to help people?
I just swear, I did actually do an actual shadow, so he was exactly where the shadows were. The shed is at 10 by 15, or it says proposed shed on the one drawing, if I read wrong.
So the shed is gonna be built directly next to the house itself?
Yeah.
Yes.
No space between the two?
Correct. And then I was mentioning about the septic, I didn't want to say to Mike. So we did determine the cap location for the septic, and then actually took the corner out there and moved the shed, or the deck, I'm sorry, a little bit further north, so they would have enough depth to be able to put a table and stuff like that. Because before we had more depth, they kind of squared off there and gave more depth on that northwest corner, but now we're just gonna move it back a little further. Again, start trying to stay as far away from the street and the front setback as we can.
How tall is the shed gonna be?
The shed?
Within that?
Yeah, probably.
Within the proposed, within the proposed limits, I mean, order, because I did a neck permit application, and then they found out that we were coming for a variant for a deck, so the shed, the application that I did, they said that they would hear it at the same time, and I submitted all that information.
Plan, plans for the plans and elevation of the shed?
No, not, not.
This is what, this is, this is the information that we have on the screen? Was there more information on that?
Yeah, it was actually, you were scrolling through it earlier.
So in the original, that I submitted, it wasn't on there, I just said that somebody added on.
Okay.
Since, so it's not on the original elevations.
Because I went through these, I have hard copy of this, I didn't see anything in here.
It's not an old survey map that I submitted, and it has a red square on it, where I wanted to, that's what's up on the screen.
So we've got the dimensions that it's a 10 by 15 shed, but we just don't have height, or, you know, or whether it looks like.
Yeah, maybe it'll be, you know, just a one story, but then, you know, pretty shallow, there's something.
Is this gonna be a pre-purchased shed, or are you gonna build it sticked up?
I'm going to buy a kit and put, and put it together myself.
Metal, wood?
Probably wood.
Okay.
I have a question about that though. So if I put it, if I put it on a foundation, is that a variant? If I either put it on gravel, or I put it on slab?
You need a variance because it's beyond the front setback?
Okay.
So that, regardless of what you put it on, it's because you're beyond the front setback, is what the issue winds up being. Personally, being an architect, having a gable roof next to a house, having water running between two structures that you have no access to, causes concern for future rot and, you know, other concerns from a structural standpoint, that's beyond the purview of this board. So I would question putting it right next to your house with little to no space between the two, just so that you can maintain your resident structure.
That would be, that would make sense.
Reason next to the house versus anywhere else on the cap acre plot?
Just seems to be the most convenient. That's actually, if you look at the, the survey map that I gave, you can see that the squared out, the squared out portion to the right, there used to be a rise on the property, and sometime around 2000, between 2007 and 2012, the, the rise was disrepaired and they had to remove it. So that's another reason why we wanted a small shed on the property, is because the property doesn't have a problem.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? What's the exterior gonna look like? Exterior of the shed?
It'll be just whatever the, like, platform kit map.
We will definitely, when we do submit for the building permit, we'll get to that, we will definitely have some, like, assess the shed more, and we're not gonna have it so it's, you know, raining back into the house, so we'll submit that, but I guess we're just, I guess I get the book for it, and I may allow now, that would be a lot of work.
And maybe get away from the problem of the two of the eaves running into the house, maybe you can purchase a shed where a shed slab, slab away from the house, for sure, that would help mitigate the water problem.
No. Other questions from the board? At this point, open up for a public discussion, comment, if anybody has anything to say for or against the project? Bring it back to the board. Any other comments from the board? All right. Quote on Seeker. So I make a motion for a type two action under Seeker pursuant to NYCRR, section 617.5 of the Environmental Code?
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion for the variance, right?
Can you run through those?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The location, there, there is no place attached to this house where a deck could go that's not going to be in the front setback, because the entire house is in the front setback, is shown on one of the architectural plans. Everything to be done to the structure is welcome, the front setback of the house, just based on it was built in the 1800s, and my brother was a tiny little farmer then, and had no setbacks. The applicant, he has made limitations to avoid the septicing location, which is the right thing to do, inappropriate. The deck itself is not oversized, I will say it's not out of character, maybe a lot of the houses along the road are decks, it's just that a lot of the houses along the road are located much further back. Will be no detriment created to nearby properties, it's not gonna be a line of sight issue, there's no one here from the neighborhood that's complaining about it. Excuse me. Request is not substantial, the shed itself is not oversized, and the deck is not oversized. The location of the shed is roughly there, there used to be a garage many years ago, and it is the most appropriate location based on the structure of the house and the structure of the lot. No adverse environmental or physical, physical or environmental impacts to the site, and in this case, I'll say the difficulty, it's not self-created, since the house has been there for under 80 years, and we must.
Can I add something to that?
Absolutely.
If you make a motion to approve this, can we make a, that we're just approving the extension of pre-existing ninety-four inch apartments rather than a variant of seven feet, four inches?
I was gonna ask, Dan, if, is it, can we consider it an extension of a pre-existing ninety-four inch structure?
Obviously, looking at the survey and the portion in the right way, I, I just would feel more comfortable going that route rather than, sure the approval for.
The variance, right.
And then defining the extension, it is not coming any closer to the fronts, the front property line than seven feet and.
Right. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Does that make sense, Josh?
I would say it's section Josh on pre-existing.
I think that's 350-34.
Yeah, 350, 350, maybe one.
Just repeat it again, so they know.
Oh, we're just doing a findings, we, the, the.
So then, motion to create an extension to a pre-existing ninety-four inch structure at 528 Lake Road, to allow a shed within the front setback, no closer to the road than seven feet four inches, or to the property line, I'm sorry, the front property line. And to allow for the addition of a 642 square foot deck to the rear of the structure. Per the architectural plan dated 7/8/24, eight dot two.
Do you, the title's number?
Okay, it would be crystal two, ten, code section 350, dash nine, four. And.
It's really important, section.
All right, so we refer to both of them, 350, 354, 350, 354, and, how about a particular question? And also, can we limit that the height of the shed will fall within the restrictions of the code of emissions at 10 foot? Go to average.
Second?
Mrs. Volan?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Fentonada?
Aye.
Mr. Hausler?
Aye.
Mr. Leiden?
Aye.
You have your variance for proposed deck and shed, you have one year meaningful type of construction, you do have to get a permit for your deck, so congratulations and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Josh, thank you for calling back for, appreciate you.
You really take a look at the agreement with the county for the, the.
Yeah, we'll have our attorney.
Save yourself a lot, like.
Was it Curry, Curry, is that proposal for him? Who's the attorney, the lawyer?
Stephen McQuaid. Stephen, oh, sorry, Stephen McQuaid.
Stephen McQuaid, yeah, just give him a, give him a call.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris. All right, so we are above 857 Partridge Lane, hot tub in Zeevo, located at 857 Partridge Lane. Requesting a variant to allow a rear setback, less than what is required, associated with construction of 144 square foot accessory structure, Zeevo, over a hot tub on a 44 acre parcel having a PL 04.18, dash one, dash six, one, located in our residential district. How's it going?
How's it going, nice, good, cool stop by. So I proposed, I'm just putting in a hot tub, and I put up these people over it, and I'm infringing on, I don't know, what's the number?
350, dash twelve.
That's right, fifty feet from your rear, or your back property line, I have a total of 55 feet. As you can see, as Mike and Dan were both at the house, they're grading for the back of the property, there's only one section that you really could put it. You can't really put it right up next to it because the door of the patio opens up, and it would just not look proper. And there's no encouragement on anybody. I have supporting paperwork for all my neighbors, I did finally get ahold of my, the back property neighbor, Don, he was on vacation, I have them right here, Zeevo itself, I did not submit the plans for, but I have them right here, should have been for.
Yeah, can you put Josh, please? And you said you have supporting documents from neighbors, I only have one neighbor.
Shed two.
I have D 47, uh, is what I, we talked about.
You don't have Dan and Ellen?
I don't, I'm not saying that, Josh, I don't.
No, we only have one.
Well, I'm infringing on the rear guy, that's his, Dan and Ellen you should have, because it's not my folder, and I submit it, anyways. Dan and Ellen are not here, right?
So John, John is, is the neighbor to the rear, is that correct?
John is, yeah.
John is.
Dan and Ellen are, as you come to the property, to the left room.
Do you have a copy, I'm not saying, do you have a copy with you, do you have a copy at home of Dan and Ellen's support?
I don't, because I submitted.
Okay.
But if I can get it.
So if you can get another one, I'd like to have it on record, share for the conversation, so. The hot tub is sitting on?
It's gonna be a gravel pad, so it's gonna be six inches of gravel, the footers are gonna be within the 12 foot square, so that, you can see with zibble posts, they're gonna be within side that, and they're gonna align right to the side of tubes, and they're gonna be hurricane bracketed on.
I have any questions, the board have any questions?
No.
You, you shed is in 12 by 12?
It's 12 by 12, I mean, the shed.
Any questions, Mr. I'm sorry, can we, is that a question shed, because it's not a closed?
It is a shed, it's a Zeevo.
That's a, that's a legal, I mean, shed, I don't really need a definition, utility shed, and then we don't wanna include him from being a, a shed.
So it's considered, all right, so we'll probably give an accessory charge.
Right.
Interesting, interesting. All right, any other questions? At this point, open to public, anybody wants to speak for or against this project, please come on up. Okay, with no additional comments, unless the board, any additional comments here at the board?
In order considering it as an accessory structure, which means for the apartment, it's a, it's a, where it might, check to bring condition, and it will not be imposed.
Have you any objections to that?
This way it remains as it is, rather than a shed imposed, those are my rights.
Do you have any objections to that?
I don't, I mean, the other thing I might do is put a mesh in the back for privacy.
It's only on one side, it's still unenclosed.
Correct.
With that, I will, well, make a motion for a type two action under Seeker pursuant to NYCRR, section 617.5 of the Environmental Code?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To the findings? To the findings? Can you ask me anything?
I'll let you.
This Zeebo, I don't see it being at a character of the neighborhood. It's not gonna create detriment of the nearby properties. We have letters from two of the neighbors and we'll be getting a third neighbor that are for it. So clearly not detriment to the nearby neighbors. It's not achievable by any other methods because of the geography of the property and due to other variances, variables on the property itself. So really the location that is being imposed is really the only location that is really viable for this. It's not substantial, it's a twelve by twelve Zeebo that will be housed in a hot tub underneath. The Zeebo is going to be supported by four side tubes and no decking, no concrete slab is going down underneath it. No adverse physical environmental attacks to the site. Difficulty is not self-regard because of the geography of the property itself. Not undesirable change and, as I said, not a significant, significant request for the property itself. That, I'd like to, to eight five seven Partridge Lane, hot tub Zeebo, provide a area variance to allow a rear setback of sixteen feet for a twelve foot by twelve foot top end pair Zeebo that will be supported by four side tubes with the condition that the Zeebo will not be enclosed. The Zeebo will be used to cover a hot tub on a point, zero point four acre parcel having SBL zero six four point one eight dash one dash six one located in Arc Three Residential District under section three five zero dash twelve.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mrs. Bola, aye, Mr. Weigand?
Aye.
Mr. Hausen?
Aye.
Mr. Spandau?
Aye.
All right, you have your variance, you have one year of meaningful destruction. Assuming, do we need a permit from? So you will have to get a permit for the?
Yeah, Josh is very, Josh is very, I appreciate your trust.
We, I think we all agree, so, so thank you, make sure you get a permit as well.
You bet.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Two eighteen, they consider a gravel and porch addition located at two eighteen Close and Road. Advocate Stephen Smith is requesting area variances to allow a front and west side setback less than what is required associated with construction in the proximity of a four hundred sixteen square foot attached garage addition and a covered porch addition on a point five hundred acre parcel having SBL number zero six three point one seven dash one dash nine located in the Arc Two Single Family Residential District under section three five zero dash eleven of code of town.
Good evening. How you doing? I just wanna be able to put a wrap around porch on the front and add a garage and dress up the house a little. It's kind of a eyesore. We just bought it at Christmas time last year and we wanted to spruce it up, make it look nice, put this garage in there. And we're asking for just a little bit of room in the front. And a little, that's what it looks like now. That's what we're trying to do. Make it look like it's, you know, makes it look like it belongs in the area. You know, make it nice. I mean, the setbacks aren't, I mean, I'm still, the closest spot is ten feet and that's on the side porch. Other than that, we got quite a distance on the property lines all the way around. And Paul's drawings here, we have actual what it will be, setbacks will be at the end. The side, it's actually, it will be ten, ten point three feet from the property line after it's built. And on the garage side, I'll have fifteen foot one, and I don't believe that that's, that's not, that's not approaching. And on the front, we'll have fifty-four feet from the road.
So I think the zoning is fifty-five feet, if I remember correctly. Is there a reason why the extra foot? The front setback, I believe, is fifty-five feet, if I remember correctly.
Well, Paul said I needed a variance for a couple of feet right there on the front porch, so we can make that.
If it's fifty-four, you're gonna need a variance, I guess my question is, is there a way that you don't need that variance?
No, because of the garage, the way that the garage is, we gotta get a man door in right there and we'll have the Zeebo.
The front setback is sixty feet. Oh, is it sixty feet? I don't remember, probably fifty-five.
Yeah, Paul couldn't make it tonight, he's wired seven point six feet here.
Questions from the board?
Will this company correct your violations on the property?
Excuse me, yes, they were, it was just a trailer, a couple trailers, I had work trailers and then I moved them to my shop. I got a shop for that. Like I said, we just bought the property. I put a little, like a tent up, but it's, it's taped down properly, so it won't take off and go through the neighborhood or anything like that. And that's just so that I could store stuff and not make a eyesore out there.
So the stuff that's stored inside the, ever ratio?
They don't end up inside the garage and it's only a golf cart right now that's in there, it's nothing really. And then I just, you know, as we're building, I can keep material under there until I get the garage built. I'll build the garage first, that way I can keep the stuff for the porch and then the back addition is, it's already undercover right there. It's not really an addition in the back. It's just, it's a porch now, it's a structure now, a clean closed structure.
You do the construction yourself?
Yes, I have done framing, framing since I was fifteen years old. Framed numerous houses, I did all the houses for Nick DeAngelo and a lot of different builders throughout the area. If you look on my website, it's deckcarpinger.com, you can see that a lot of stuff that we're doing.
You're not intending on doing any mechanical work here as a personal operation?
Oh, absolutely not, no, this is just, this is residential only.
Okay, as long as you realize that and know that it's part of the effort.
Other questions?
I think I have an answer, but once the garage addition is added and a lot of the material that's parked and stored outside will be able to be put inside the garage and?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's no material yet, there's a lawnmower and just little stuff right now, but yeah. That's why I need the space, that's why I need the garage. And after we bought the house, I obtained an office, I had eleven twenty Wester Drive, so that we have parking spaces for our commercial trailers and our stuff in the office. You know, showroom kind of deal, so people can pick out different groundings and stuff like that.
Any questions, comments?
This will take care of the vehicle that's temporarily stored outside and that'll be in the garage?
Yeah, it's a sixty-six month staying under the cover, yes, and then it'll be gone. It'll be in the garage soon, we rebuild it. It's not a spot of rust on that car.
At this point, I'll open it up to public comment, if anybody's speak for or against. There is a five minute limit.
Okay.
Come on up.
I just wanted to say?
I need you to speak into the mic.
Yeah.
You have to go up to the podium. I need you to state your name and address.
Barbara Marshall, eight hundred and twenty five Webster. And I live right around the corner and I can see their house and property. And there's more things on their property, two Jaskies now are sitting there. There are trailers, cars that parked on the lawn all winter. There are bags of mulch, there's, and right now, there's all kinds of stuff sitting on the lawn. And the backyard also is a mess, so I wish we would clean that up.
It's all getting cleaned up, that's why I need the garage right there, so that I can do that. And I inherited a lot of that, I just bought the property at Christmas. I just bought the property. Dan was over there today, it wasn't a mess, we had that whole thing cleaned up.
It was a whole yard. You shouldn't wait and address your comments to the board, right?
I went past it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I went past it this afternoon and the Jaskies are sitting there, there's wood clowns and in the back. I can't see the back, but my neighbor has said sort of, there are things all over the back, the roof, the roof has debris on top of it. It's very unsightly.
Turn on the rug.
All I think, all I can think is, now that I've had an extra driveway, is that gonna be cool, a walkway that they sit on, sitting in it?
And the vehicles, nothing's on the lawn or anything like that, we'll have a garage and then my, my, all our vehicles are brand new. And I'm so about. Yeah, just address the board. I'm sorry, all the vehicles are brand new, they're twenty-two or newer, the Jaskies are brand new and I have a dock slip, I just went.
This is good.
You may be turned back.
We're gonna just talk.
Yeah.
Just wait.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Any other comments, Ben?
No, it doesn't make any difference, new cars or not, I mean, I have to, it's just any car that's sitting there constantly, the driveway is filled with all kinds of cars. It's very unsightly if you look past it. And I went there, I looked specifically, I drive in and out of there all the time and I have to look away because it's so scary.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there any other comments from the board?
I wish the volume was a little higher on things, you can't hear very well, any of them guys.
Well, they're not speaking into the mic and they're not speaking about it now.
Up there too.
I can't hear anything that's going on.
Yep, please, have your angle of mic closer. Name and address.
Ellen Santora, I live at seven thirty-two Admiralty Way, Webster. And I bought this property entirely along the backyard fence. And there's, there's a lot of encroachment of that property into that fence line with a lot of trash. I have pictures that I've taken and I can give them to you, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. And Ellen, I believe you also sent us an email with comments as well, correct?
Yeah, I just couldn't sign the pictures.
That's fine, okay.
Well, you give the pictures to Josh.
Yep.
And he'll give to the board of the people, okay?
Josh, yes.
Are those violations on the applicants' property in this section? Yeah, because they have no examples?
We just, again, we just want to talk.
So?
Does the board wish to have information about those?
I'd like to see what the quotes are.
So the applicant should see the quotes, if we're gonna question the applicant about those, those or make any rulings tonight. That's what are in part, even in part, based on the quote, so they should have.
Yep, yeah, let's hear it. For me, everything was in the front, front yard, so I had to pull it out from the back.
Assume for a second that this was gonna be approved, when do you want to start this work?
I'd like to be able to do the foundation for the garage as soon as possible, as soon as I can permit for it all.
Okay, well, I'm asking you.
I mean, none of them cars are there right now at all. That trailer is now at my office, I have this area for my work trailer. And the car was in the driveway so that I could clean out the area with my tools and stuff and bring them to the office. Again, we just bought the property in Christmas, it was in Jan, it was right at the end of the year, just made it for the beginning of the year. It was the end of December, we bought the property, if you look it up.
So let me, let me tell you what the concept is, okay? And, and I really don't want to dig down necessarily tonight for the facts, because it might not be the right time. But just as a general concept, the board might, I don't vote, I'm just telling you that they might be thinking. As a general proposition, if there is a property that has violations upon it, they may want to reserve making a determination until the property is in compliance and then make that decision. I don't know, and I don't want to get into the debate right now.
We did that, Dan was over there today.
I didn't do it anyway, so, okay. So, Josh, the, the reflection of the photos, it may be unpleasant to the eye, but that and that, those appear to be code violations or not necessaries?
No, there are active code violations on the property.
And, and that conclusion is being drawn from what?
Observations made by a code enforcement officer.
And that's separate from the quotes, yeah?
Add more about, like?
Well, the notice and order was last issued on July third.
So, Mr. Smith, here's, here's my thinking, you can accept it or reject it further. You may wanna get those resolved, be, here we go, before you ask the board to decide on this issue. If you were to do that, you might want to ask it to be tabled till next month, when those issues have been addressed and the code enforcement officer has reported back that you're, you're all set and good to go. It may, again, I'm not voting, act unfavorably on the application, if you ask the board to act before those issues are resolved. And you may say to me, hey, look, we resolved them already. Nobody on this board knows that, but the code enforcement will confirm it for us. And then lastly, I wouldn't really say this is a Fifth Amendment issue. I don't know what's gonna happen, whether the town's gonna prosecute it or not, but you could consider to just take my recommendation, work through the code resolutions without saying anything tonight, and then come back with a clean slate, so to speak, in August and then the board would be. You can take your, take your leave, it's just a suggestion.
I'm going to do what you suggest, I mean, it'd be a smart move, all right?
A lot of applicants don't respond that way, I think, to their detriment, but I think that-
Well, that's the whole point of my whole thing, is so I can build the garage so I can bring it back and make it look beautiful, I guess. So I've only owned it for six months.
Understood, understood. We, although it's not a legal requirement, we want you to be good neighbors and your neighbors to be good to you. And I'm assuming that if all those issues are addressed, they probably won't be here and your application may sit for, I don't know, but that's my, that's my thinking.
I understand, they're in a completely different neighborhood, them streets aren't even touching or anywhere near them.
Right, but, but nevertheless-
I understand, I'll make it-
And the general policy, we don't want to give approval to properties that are, that are, or violations are existing. And we kind of, right, right may not know, the left can't do it.
I understand completely.
So are you asking us to table until August?
Yeah, go, you can, have somebody come take a look, because I, everything is straightened up, it's all beautiful. Dan was there today.
He was just there today. The back, the back of it's been cleaned up considerably. But as far as code violations, I can't answer that, because we're not, we're not the office, we're not the code officer.
Oh, I understand.
No, but I guess the question, the idea, um-
I mean, I was thinking, I was building the house for the whole time that I owned this house and I just got back. I just literally just got back three days ago. I'm building a house up on Big Moose.
When you just purchased this property in December of last year?
Snap.
Um, did the previous owners leave a lot of their-
There was a lot of stuff, there was a lot of stuff, I've taken away four dumpsters so far.
Okay, because I, because I know that in the past, there have been complaints that there was a lot of stuff on the property.
There's four dumpsters full of stuff so far that I got rid of on the yard.
Okay, so you don't, you are making-
I'm trying to make it beautiful, I mean, I'm going to put Cedar Collins in, I'm going to make it look like, you don't even know it's going to be beautiful, that's what I'm trying to do.
And I think one of the things the applicant's trying to do is by adding the third bay to the garage, that gives storage space to permit the things that are in front of the house to be no longer-
Yes, as well as driveway space.
And have that temporary structure removed because the stuff in the structure will be put away. So I'm, I don't know, I guess I won't tell the applicant to table or not to table, but if, if the applicant tables it, until there's space to put the stuff in, where does the stuff go? Is, is, as far as what's in front?
Sure.
The bag is cleaned up from the-
Again, I didn't walk into the back, so I don't know, Danny said you were out there.
Yeah.
The bag was cleaned up pretty good.
What about the front? The front was gorgeous, the front is beautiful now. I mean, they put mom chow and everything, I've been in here for three days since I've been in Big Moose, literally three days.
May I, I guess, I'll ask the board. We still, we do still have two outstanding violations, the side yard and the, uh, the temporary structure. I'm not saying they're not resolved, I'm just, we still have two open violations, that's all I'm saying. Which, I'm assuming by the thirteenth is when we'll be out there checking on that and getting that confirmed that it's been taken care of and they'll be gone. So I guess-
This is the chicken and the egg scenario.
It is.
I agree with Karen. I think if the applicant starts this project, if the equipment's completed, I think they'll resolve a lot of those issues. It's not to say you look, uh, you still can't, look at the property or reorganize so it's more culpable to some neighbors.
I could be fast about building that too, I, I've been framing since I was a little kid, I can show you pictures. I built this house and said, I had my own crew since I was fifteen years old. I still got guys working for me to this day. So please, it's not even, it's just the variance for the front and the little side, it's only a little bit of area and it's going to open up a whole big patch so I can take care of all the issues, all the mess that anybody sees that there's a mess there. I mean, I could, there's an unsightly shed in the backwards facing this woman's property. I could tear that down, I could make it, I could make it nice, I, I mean, and this is just going to prolong me a month before I can even get it permitted.
Well, that's one, yes. Well, so the, the board could, could issue an approval, if it did, and have a condition upon the resolution of compliance and the qualification, the code officer effectuating all the old, the old-
We can also position a NOCO, you issue until, uh, compliance is done.
I promise you, I'll make it beautiful, I promise you. It's going to be gorgeous, we hear a lot of promises here. It's going to be all hard deciding on the front and the searing, that black metal roof, the copper, it's going to be gorgeous. I have the money to do it, I'm not even, I don't even need a loan.
I guess I, I hope you're working forward, board is okay?
Yes.
I just-
What's going to happen from now on then, and we've got a condition of the-
And I don't, like, I don't have a condition of building permit, but I have a condition, the C, the C of all is everything has to be put away, structure removed. Now, it is, I guess, potentially going to delay resolution of-
Well, keep cleaning, I'm not going to stop cleaning because, I mean, I want the property to be beautiful. I want people's property value to go up, I don't want it to go down.
This, when it, when it's finished, it's going to be a very attractive house.
That's our point.
And I read through letter that it-
It's going to be beautiful, I mean, compared to what I want, I mean, if you show it to, I mean, look at that, compared to the, I mean- Go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask if there are-
Speak into the mic, please.
Is there a limit on how many vehicles can be in the, like, on the property in the driveway? I'm just curious.
Registered.
Right, so-
Licensed, licensed and registered.
Yep, okay, well, we have three, so I was just curious, and they're all-
You know, a lot, a lot of it is just aesthetics.
Yeah.
If you put in, you know, line them up, you know, rather than park it in the middle of the front lawn.
Right, and the garage, the extra garage will make the driveway wider, which will make it look nice and bright, like it's supposed to be and not like, you know, a mess. That driveway will be all brand new if I can keep going, you know?
You know, what I'm going to say, a lot of it's aesthetics, just line it up and make it look presentable.
Make it be beautiful.
We need more room, just like in our front foyer, we want to, we want to add to it, right? Extend it out, just because everything, when there's on our floor, it becomes cluttered. And we just want to resolve that.
For one thing at a time.
Yes.
We're trying.
And I'm going to make a motion on secret. I made a motion for a type two action under secret pursuant to NYCRR, section six one seven point five of the environmental code. Check it. All who's in favor?
Aye.
I, I will, I will say that the request will not be out of character with the neighborhood. In the, at once this project is done, the house is going to just be significantly better aesthetically than it is right now.
Absolutely.
It's just, yeah, it's just flat.
I understand, it's a must.
The, the end result will not create a detriment to nearby properties and in fact, I think it will improve the condition for nearby properties because it's going to clean up the fur that's around the front of the house, the side of the house. And, and yeah, a very attractive house to add to the, the aesthetics of the neighborhood. The request is not substantial. If we're looking at the front setback, um, to the garage is going to be fifty-six feet and to the porch will be fifty-four feet, or sixty feet is required. Um, houses within that neighborhood, they're not all right in a row, so it will not be noticeable if the garage juts out a little bit and in fact, it will give a little bit of depth to the front of the house, which will make it, it'll, it'll just make it look better. Um, and, and having a different depth, it won't look as character as the houses are on several different setbacks along the street. No adverse environmental or physical impacts to the side of the neighborhood. It will impact, improve the impact to the neighborhood. The difficulty is semi-self-created, semi-not self-created. The house is located where it is, the, um, house is biased on one side of the lot more so than the other. So it, the house not being centered means that I need a, um, a variance for the side setback for the porch, but I do not need a side setback variance for the garage and there will still be adequate access to the rear of the structure going around the side of the garage and still staying within the lot because I want it fifteen feet. Um, the request is not significant, it is only four feet of a sixty-foot setback. Let me see. All right, now I can make a motion. I would make a motion to grant varying variance at, to maintain Dickinson Road for front setbacks that will allow a fifty-four foot front setback to the construction of a front covered porch in a fifty-six foot setback to a construction with third hand here to the garage where sixty feet is required. And additionally, a ten-foot west side setback for a covered porch addition to a house where fifteen feet is required. On a point five, a five one acre parcel with SBL number zero six three point seventeen dash one dash nine located in an R three single family residential district under section three five zero dash eleven of the code of the town of Webster.
R two, R two.
Did I ask the R two?
Is it R three?
R two. And I would condition it that the C of all for the garage would not be issued until temporary structure is removed and the material that's currently outside of the garage is going to be put away.
Garage and porch.
The porch. And then any code violations will be-
Second.
Mrs. Bola?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Shor?
Aye.
Mr. Spankerman?
Aye.
Mr. Howson?
Aye.
Mr. Light?
Aye. You have your variances, you have one year meaningful construction field to complete. You're going to need an approval for the, for the development regulations. Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you. Um, I will make a motion for the approval on the April sixth to two thousand twenty-four minutes.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
I will make the motion. I will make a motion to approve the May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four eighteen minutes. All who's in favor?
Aye and aye.
And I will make the motion to approve the June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
Check it.
All who's in favor?
Aye and aye.
That concludes our Zoom board meeting. All right, thank you everybody.
Excuse me, can I, I'm here for, well, also for ten thirty-nine Fawnwood Drive.
Yes, that was later determined that you actually don't need a variance. Oh, wonderful. Um, there were special setbacks that were given to that development.
Okay.
And I believe you are meeting the fifty-foot rear setback because I think you're proposing forty, forty-five.
Yeah, I thought, I thought so, yeah. You guys caught that?
Yes.
Beautiful.
I apologize if that wasn't-
Look at you, so we're good to go?
You are good to go.
We can apply for a comment.
Proceed with the building.
Okay, great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'm hammering the, the meeting, it's, was live streamed.
Yeah.